Oh, I can talk.
Well, then we'll just have a recording of it.
Hang on. I'm trying to remember my whole team. Anyway. The, uh...
Folks, we're gonna call an order and let the board read it. You all stand, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the United States of America and to the republic which stands alone nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Secretary of Board, will you take a minute, please?
John Brotherton.
Here.
Moto Johnson.
Here.
Katie Johnston.
Here.
Diana Mendoza.
Here.
Nikki Pettit.
She's in her car. She'll be right back.
Joe Robinson.
Here.
Tyler Wilson.
Here.
Her voice changed.
Okay, we have next to us action, agenda, additions, corrections, and modifications.
There is an item on the agenda that I don't have mine in front of me. This is what happens when we have it removed ahead of time. There is an item. It is the one about transportation, bus contract addendum, item number 10, be removed.
Okay, you have motion?
I'd like to motion to approve the agenda, remove and correct the items presented.
Wait a second.
Right there.
John Brotherton.
Hi.
Moto Johnson.
Hi.
Katie Johnston. Diana Mendoza.
Hi.
Nikki Pettit. Joe Robinson.
Hi.
Tyler Wilson.
Hi.
Rule number three, that is public comment. If you please come up here, we will speak. We have a limited five minutes, so just keep that in mind. It looks like dawn. Is that right?
Yes.
Dawn, if you don't come up here, please. Thank you so much for coming and the time.
Okay, well, I had a few things I wanted to...
If you would like to stand, just sit. Where do you want to do?
Okay. I had a few things I wanted to speak up about. The first thing was, this all started when I had called the school about a kid that was being beat up with a stick out front of the off... outside front of the office, was hitting another child with a stick. I had called the office and the lady had told me thank you for my concern and then she had hung up on me. I called the superintendent's office three or four times and I was ignored. Finally, I was called back by the principal. She said thanks for my concern. She wasn't really too concerned about it, so I posted on Facebook. Then I got a lot of responses. Quite a few people had the same, had posted too about they'd seen like fights and that they had called. One of the people, Mr. Woods had said he was more concerned about Erica's child's attendance more than he was concerned about a kid being bullied outside of the school. And there was actually, that day that there was other teachers out there. They seemed to walk past the kids that was being bullied and pushed down to walk to my van to tell me my kids needed to stay in the car. So I was a little frustrated about that. I tried to call his office. I was ignored once again. And then I called the office and I was like, thanks for your concerns. I was hung up on. Then I seen another post. I'll let those people let you know about that. Kayla Harden, her son was hit in the head with the charity swan. She told me she was not contacted. Her son went home with a concussion on his head. I have pictures. He didn't go to school the next day. They were seemed to be more concerned that he didn't go to school and more concerned about the doctors. It was just a lot of, a lot of things about bullying. And I was just concerned about, like, the bullying wasn't being taken care of. I was kind of frustrated. And I kept calling about, hey, we got a problem about bullying. We need supervision. They kind of was more concerned about who are you? And I was just like, you're not concerned about this problem. I would like some supervision. And they was like, well, do you have kids? And I was like, no, I'm a daycare provider and I'm worried about these children, that you're not really concerned. You don't have supervision. And their, their response was, well, we'd like the police to come. I was like, I'd like the police to do my job too, but that's not gonna happen. Can you put somebody out there to watch these kids? And they was like, well, you know, if you're dropping your kids off at 7:30. I'm like, this is at 7:55 in the morning, ma'am. And they didn't seem to be concerned. So I tried to call the superintendent's office a few times, which I got no response from him. And then I started posting on Facebook. Finally, I got a response on Facebook and I said, I'll just talk to you at the meeting. So no response from the school, no response from that. I started calling Channel 3 News and letting them know, hey, we got a bullying situation that nobody seems to give a damn about. And it was just an absolute mess. Alls I wanted to do was get some supervision and I couldn't seem to get anybody to care about it. The only place I was getting any response was on Facebook. So I was telling him on Facebook, you know, if you don't care about this, then we'll get the news involved. We're gonna go to board. And pardon my French, but East Lawn is just, I hate to say this, it's a real shit show. Because we got this going on over, every morning and nobody seems to care about these kids getting beat up. No supervision. They're just out there running wild. Kids are getting beat. For some reason, nobody seems to give a damn. But me. And I don't understand why nothing is being done. What's it gonna take? Do you guys remember the name Luke Miller, Centennial High School? Does anybody remember that? The kid that was bullied and beaten to death? He died. Is that what it's gonna take? A kid dying to get your guys' attention? Because this is what's going on at East Lawn and nobody seems to give a damn. And I'm sure you guys are unaware of this, but this is what we got going on at East Lawn. Until this stuff hits the news, who's gonna care? We already have a kid. Would you guys like to see the picture of the bully boy that had his head? You guys wanna see? I'll show you. The little boy that got beat up and nobody called. His mom couldn't be here tonight because he was sick. But I shall show you. Because it was ridiculous. And his mom called and other people. I mean, why, why should, why should a parent have to explain absences? I just, I don't understand that. Why are we bringing up absences when kids are getting beat up? That's all I have to say. Is it gonna take somebody getting killed to get your guys' attention? Or can we get some, alls I asked was for some supervision. Is it that big of a deal? Is money more important than the kid's life? What if it was your kids? I mean, that should be, somebody should be embarrassed that kids are getting beat up out there. Is it gonna take the news going over there and videotaping that to get one person?
Thank you. You appreciate that, Dr. Booth. You've come.
I'm not at this time, but I would be happy to follow up.
I've been calling. Nobody's getting back to me. Alls I'm asking is for supervision. I shouldn't even have to be...
I said I would call you and I have called you.
You, you never call.
Thank you. If we wanna go there, we can later.
Jesus.
Thank you. Is it Wendell? Okay, yes. All right. Wendell, I could not reach.
I didn't put that side of his name either.
Thank you. Wendell, you didn't ask me to be the guy.
He does that all the time.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
Parents. Phone calls. In the store. Knocking on my door at home. We better get a handle on this. It's not about the money. It's about these children. We know that. You're getting your salaries anyway. It's about these children. It's one out there in the morning, no childcare provider or parent who has to work, especially a parent who has multiple children in school that lives within the foundaries, that they don't qualify for bus transportation, have to sit at the school and wait to make sure that child is safe enough to get into school. We need to get supervision out there in the morning. In the evening, we need supervision out there. Don't say at the end, because it has not been done that way all the time, that if it didn't happen on campus, it's not our responsibility. It's a lie. It is your responsibility because they're still our children. You cannot say that. If it happened, it happened. There's still students in 137. In the morning, we need some supervision out there. You're sending out this, you want all these volunteers. What about the people who you already paying? What about these semi-pro, pro-parental professionals? We need people at the school in the morning. A childcare provider who's making a living providing childcare for the students of this district should not have to wait at East Lawn to 8:03 when they gotta get to Pleasant Acres and wait there and then get to Broad Meadow and wait there and then get to Northview and wait there. No, it does not work. Get someone out there to take care of these children. A stick can do a lot of harm to a child. A pencil can do a lot of harm to a child. We have put ourselves in a position to where there's gonna be some lawsuit. These people who are talking to us are talking about moving out of town.
Oh, yeah.
And if they move out of town, you all don't have a job. But you're raising the taxes. Who you think gonna pay the taxes? We need some type of supervision at these schools. Everybody can volunteer. The economy is bad. Everybody got to work. Who wants to work? These snide remarks that we're making to these parents, no, that does not go here. I don't know where you're coming from. I don't know where you live, but that will not go here. Do we need the media here? No. Will we bring the media here? You darn right, we will. We're gonna get some attention here. This will not continue to go on. This has been going on too much. Right here, just on one post, 193 people. 193 people on one post concerning bullying. And it's not only going on at East Lawn. It's going on at PA. It's going on at Northview. It's going on at Broad Meadow. It's going on here at ADR. We gotta do this better than we're doing it. Your responsibility is to hold people accountable. You gotta hold them accountable. No principal, no administrator, no assistant principal, parent professional teacher, I don't care, janitor, whoever should state to any parent, well, your child does not get to school all the time anyway. So what? At least they came to school. We can't be concerned about the dollars. This is about these children. And if they're not gonna learn here, they don't, you're not gonna learn at home while your businesses are spending and expelling them. If we do the preventive measures now, we will not have to worry about it later. We will not have to worry about it later. We can't keep passing our problems on from 137 to 193. Because once they leave out of 193, whatever school that they decide to register in, they're gonna have to go back and take some classes that they should have had and understood at ADR. This is going too far out of line. Mr. Wood can't address like that. You cannot address like that. Please, do not address any parent like that. Please, don't do that. They deserve the respect. I don't care if they have a gentle or boding education. They deserve the respect because it's still a parent. It's a parent. And we gotta respect them as human beings, all of them. I'm gonna respect each one of you as Mr. and Ms., but when a parent is talking to you, that's still Mr. and Ms. I don't care how you feel about it. That's Mr. and Ms. I'm finished with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Rachel Palmer.
All right. Good evening. My name is Rachel Palmer and I'm a special education teacher at East Lawn. I'm here tonight with several of my colleagues to read a joint statement written by those of us here and several who couldn't make it tonight from East Lawn. We would like to address the recent comments and concerns posted on Facebook and other social media outlets. We are here as a united front in support of East Lawn, our families, and our students. We want to first address the concern of supervision. As it is stated in our student handbook, supervision does not start until 8:05 a.m. each morning. It is very important that students arrive as close to the start time as possible. Please talk with your student about morning expectations at home. Additionally, there have been many posts about bullying at East Lawn on social media. Bullying is defined as the following in our student handbook. Any severe and/or repeated physical or verbal act, written or electronic, directed towards a student that has or can be predicted to have the effect of one or more of the following. One, placing the student in reasonable fear of harm to the student's person or property. Two, causing a substantially detrimental effect on the student's physical or mental health. Three, substantially interfering with the student's academic performance. Four, substantially interfering with the student's ability to participate in or benefit from the services, activities, or privileges provided by the school. Teachers and administration take every case of bullying seriously and investigate the allegations. The term bullying is not to be used lightly and, and is to be used when there is credible, significant, and evidential sport, evidential support based on the definition. We are in no way, shape, or form discrediting any form of bullying. There is a manner in which we follow in regards to these serious accusations. We are not ignoring any accusation. There is a procedure that we must take. Any disciplinary action can only be addressed with the given family. We at East Lawn and any other school cannot release any information in regards to or about another student, including another student's disciplinary actions. We hear our families' concerns and frustration. We don't want any student to go through being bullied for any reason. East Lawn staff has been continuously reteaching, practicing, and going over expectations with our students. This means we review recess behavior, bathroom etiquette, lunch behaviors, special expectations, and classroom routines daily. We as teachers and staff want to ensure that our students feel safe and welcome. We are here to teach our students academically and here to help our students grow socially and emotionally. Classroom teachers assess the social-emotional needs of our students three times per year. This year, an additional social, social worker was added to provide more social-emotional support. Our social work team creates groups based on student and teacher assessments. They are also involved in whole class lessons in each grade level to address specific class and student needs. Lessons are being taught about bullying, being assertive, calming techniques with heightened emotions, and so forth. These lessons, taught with consistency, have shown to reduce the given behaviors at school. In addition to using conscious discipline schoolwide, the new SEL curriculum, Slide 5, was added this year to help support the social-emotional needs of our students. After a behavior occurs, our staff uses restorative strategies and interventions to repair relationships and to teach missing skills. We are supported by many families and students. There are a lot of opportunities for families to be involved and partner with our school. This year, we held an open house night, parent-teacher conference night, and a kickball game against Pleasant Acres. There are also regularly scheduled explorers events, a Hispanic Heritage event tomorrow night at ADR, and many more exciting opportunities to come. We also have many parents involved with our bilingual parent committee. We encourage parents and guardians to be in contact with classroom teachers and administration. We want our families to check in. We want our families to ask for help or clarification. The best place to start is with the classroom teacher. Building administration is also available for support. With a strong foundation at school and the support from home, we can help our students achieve many wonderful things. We welcome your ideas and solutions and invite you to become an active part in our school. With family, school, and our community working together, we hope to increase positive experience and make East Lawn safe for everyone. I'd like to leave you with one last thought. A small group of thoughtful people can change the world. Indeed, it's the only thing that ever has.
Thank you.
Thank you for everyone who listened.
Mr. Chavitz. Thank you for coming.
I'm here regarding a situation my daughter has been having at East Lawn Elementary. And after what I just heard from the previous speaker, it seems like the things that are going on are being pushed aside on technicalities on what bullying is. And you guys can classify bullying however you guys want. The fact of the matter is, things are happening to these kids at school, especially minds, and supervision doesn't begin until 8:05. What about the parents who have children in other schools? I don't leave my daughter at East Lawn because I see what goes on every morning. I wait with her until there is a teacher who opens the door and I physically... God forbid I did leave my daughter there. I do see what goes on and it's nothing nice. These schools are starting to remind me of Chicago Public Schools. They really are. I am from Chicago. I grew up in Chicago. I moved out here to give my family a better life, my children a better school system, and they started in Chicago Public Schools. My children don't act like this. And I do believe it does start at home with how these children act. But I also believe it does take some kind, some type of enforcement from the school for the parents to realize that it's not gonna be allowed. I have seen the incidents that were already spoken of here. And I am not happy with what's going on with these schools. And there is a possibility that I will be leaving Rantoul because of this. I do not want my daughter to go into that. Not from kindergarten. She's in kindergarten now. If this doesn't get corrected from the little girl that's been bullying her, my daughter's been spit on by this little girl. I've spoken with the teacher several times. I've spoken with the assistant principal. I spoke with everybody I possibly could, and I'm here now to speak to you. Being spit on? That's very low. That's disgusting. And nothing's been done to this little girl. I do not want this little girl to go to home and get beat by her parents. But if she doesn't get corrected now in kindergarten, what is she gonna be like by the time she hits the eighth grade? If it just keeps getting ignored? And she's escalating because the last I spoke to the teacher, it's went from only my daughter that she's been bothering to four other students now, including my daughter in kindergarten. I've requested this little girl be moved to a different classroom.
It hasn't happened.
But I'm not here to talk bad about anybody or how you guys do your job or how the schools handle their job. But supervision is needed outside of these schools. 8:05 ain't gonna cut it. People have other kids in other schools. 8:05 is just not gonna do it. And I get it. You guys are asking for volunteers to help out, and I'm more than wanting to help out, but I will tell you as a father of a student, I wouldn't like another parent telling me, telling my child what to do. It's different when it's a member of the school who is employed at the school correcting these students' behavior versus a one parent telling another child what's, another parent's child what to do. It's a completely different thing. The crossing guard gets out there a little late and, you know, she does an amazing job. I have no problem with her when she is out there. But for the kids that who are out there and have to be out there a little early, it's a free-for-all out there. Anything could happen to one of these kids. And I've seen it. And I wouldn't dare leave my daughter there by herself. I make sure she is there with me until that door opens and a teacher comes out and grabs her. There are plenty of teachers there. If the teachers, all these specific students could come out or meet their kids or maybe 10 minutes extra of their time would be much appreciated. But as far as my daughter goes, being spit on, being hit, being pushed, not being able to grab her lunch from this one specific child, what else is it gonna take for something to be done? A simple moving of her classroom. There is another vulnerable class there. And it is, it does have space for this other girl. Hasn't happened. Not sure why. I'm not sure what else needs to happen to my daughter for that to be a possibility. I, I really dread the day that something more serious happens to my daughter because I will be a different parent in that situation. And as far as, if this, this thing was touched on, where the parents weren't called when incidents happened to their children, I was never contacted either. I didn't find out until I asked my daughter when she was getting out. I walk and pick up my daughter every day and I ask her right at the door, since the crime started, what happened? How was your day today? What's going on? And she tells me. Then I address it right then and there with whoever is available to speak with because I'm not getting called at home. My wife is not getting called at home about these incidents. Why not? Why am I not being called and told my daughter was hit in her classroom? Why wasn't I called when she got spit on? How come we are not being aware of these things until we ask our children? So if I don't ask my children if I'm not that type of, of an involved father to speak with my daughter or my other children on how their day was and she doesn't tell me, I never know. That she got spit on, I never know. She got hit. I never know. She couldn't eat her lunch. Things like that. The school's not telling me. Why not? It isn't until I bring it to their attention where they wanna speak about it. It should be brought to my attention that something happened to my child in their care. That's really all I wanna say about today.
Thank you. I stress my name on, but I think I am gonna go.
Technically, Nikki, I think a board member has to talk as long as she wants, but...
I also have... I also have an issue with the way that the schools communicate with parents. I had an incident with my daughter. And if it weren't for me being the type of parent, even though I am the type of parent that I am, I went and I spoke with the teacher and was told one thing. And then got back home, got an email, which read completely different than the meeting that I had. And so I feel like, like they're saying, maybe not the exact same thing, but similar. If the teachers are communicating, if administration, not administration, but if teachers are communicating with parents the way that they should be, how are we to do our job and teach our kids what expectations are or how to handle situations? I think that there needs to be better communication with the, between the parents and the teachers. Definitely. That's all. That's all I really wanted to say.
Thank you.
We wrap this thing up. Yes, I would like to. First of all, I wanna apologize to not only the parents that actually showed up tonight and the rest of the community of District 137, Rantoul. When I was voted in, I told you guys I would do the very best I could to represent Rantoul 137 as a board member and do my best to make sure that not only the safety of your children, of our children, would, would happen, but also the, the academics, the education to be better. Dr. Woods and I had a conversation a few days ago. And like he said, we can agree to disagree. But I agree with a lot of what majority of you, if not all of you, had said, even board member Nikki Pettit there, Ms. Pettit. We have to do better. We have to do better as administrators, as superintendent, from top to bottom, and board members. We got an election coming up. Three of us are gonna be here more than likely. Doesn't mean the other four are gonna be here because I'm telling you right now, we're the weak board that can't do nothing. We don't deserve to be sitting up on this table and trying to act like we're doing something we're not. We're allowing the schools to do what they wanna do, allowing their leadership to do what they wanna do. And for communication, you're exactly right. I've ran into it. I've been disrespected by members that, or should I say, faculty. I've been disrespected by members that, uh, or should I say faculty, that work for the school as a parent, just like you. The way they talk to you, the way they act to you. When you walk into a, to a room or when you walk into an office or when you walk in to pick up your child. I took it personally because I'm a board member and I'm a disliked board member. But I'm going to tell you the way it is. I'm still a parent. And I still deserve the respect that everybody else has. And it's not happening. It's not happening for me and it's definitely not, not, not happening for you. Yes, there's a lot of things that aren't being told until it happens and you see it on Facebook and then all of a sudden boom, then it pops up. Then, then as board members, do we get information on what's happening? You guys named off a number of things that I can name off four or five other things at different schools. So just like Mr. Goldstein said, it's not just happening at Eastlon. It's happening at Pleasant Acres. It's definitely happening at Northview. It's happening at Broad Metal. The, the school probably in this aspect might not be responsible at District 137 or, or even, even the high school. But when you have an eighth grade girl walking home and she gets jumped by five high school boys and gets beat down, where are we going with this? What are we doing as a society? What are we doing as community? Because we're allowing it to continue to happen in our schools. And like you said, you're not getting no, no information on it until, till after the fact, till your daughter comes home with a black eye or something. And I agree with you. How long are we going to allow this to happen? Until someone does get severely hurt? Until someone, the community just keeps leaving or, 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 you know? And to be upfront and honest this way, I'm just thinking, take care less. This school district can care less if you leave. They're going to get their paycheck. They're going to get their raises. We have to do better. We have to do better for you guys coming in and speaking, no matter how people feel about what you're saying. Of course, you read something off paper and then you, you want to say this is the way the rules are supposed to be. This is what, what bullying is? No, that ain't true. That's just a guideline of what bullying is. And the bad part is, is one kid could do the same thing this kid did, but yet this kid would be disciplined for it. And this kid will not be disciplined for it. That's another issue that, that I wanted to bring out. So I just wanted you to know, I apologize as a board member for not doing my job. But supposedly I got at least two more years on, on the board. And I will do the best I can. Like I said, I was going to do when I first came into office. Thank you.
I feel I need to say something here. I understand where Mr. Johnson's coming from. I, I am not happy or satisfied.
Speak up.
I'm not happy or satisfied either, but there's issues here that I think we need to think about. This is not an excuse. I'm not making excuses. But I feel that our faculty and staff, our administrators are trying. Do we make mistakes? Yes. Do you make mistakes? Yes. Do I make mistakes? Certainly. But I'm not the point to throw, I'm not that point where I'm going to throw people on the bus. We all have our opinions. And I'm glad we're talking. That's the, a very good way of handling this instead of just, you know, arguing. Let's talk about it. But I, 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 I just feel it's, it's somebody's responsibility to say, wait a minute. Yes, but these people, these people have put their lives on line. I've been to these buildings. I see what goes on. And it is horrendous, the things they have to, they have to put up with. They have to deal with. So why? Because there's rules and there's regulations and there's laws. I'm trying to get a little steam. Let's try to see myself calm, calm down. But I, yes, we want to see improvement. They want to see improvement. If you ask any teacher, administrator, are, are you satisfied? They will tell you, no, they're not satisfied. They're not happy. But we're going to try to work things. We can't keep everybody happy. That's not our job. Our job is to not be right, to try to get right. And that's so important. We all have opinions. When the rubber hits the road, somebody has to be responsible. And we have to be responsible. And these people have to answer to us. And I hear, I hear what was said tonight. I listened very carefully. I thought I always try to. I think I'm a reasonable person, but I, I, I just, I, I can't, I can't let that go that, well, just, you know, we're all just a bunch of don't cares. We don't, we do care. We care a lot. Again, do we mess up? Yes. But it's not intentional. And we're going to try to get it right. And we're not going to try to do right, we're going to try to get it right.
What happened to our good principals? Because these schools wasn't always bad. We had Mr.
Have we done a couple of comments?
Yes.
And we had Mr. Wallace.
I'm sorry.
We had Mr. Wallace did a wonderful job with Eastlon. We didn't have these problems when he was there. And the guy after him was great.
You had your chance. Thank you very much. If you want to talk to us later afterwards, we'd be glad to talk to you.
Okay.
I will stay here as long as it takes. We have to do, we do have a meeting. Shut up too. Okay. Thank you.
We are on.
Five?
Yep. So I'll run through what's on the.
Discussion possible approvals. Any items removed? Senator.
We're not there yet. We're song.
I'll be quiet.
All right. Um, we, in your packet are the board meeting minutes, bills and financial documents, the personnel report. Um, we did have one large donation this month of $1,500 from Dawn Bab at County Financial. There is an MOU with, it should read RCSBA. I have it wrong, but it's correct on the actual MOU I gave that. And that is clarifying language so that when employees, teachers do extra duty pay, that they need to turn in their time sheets in a timely manner. It's a pretty minor thing, but it, it will help some things out. Also, an intergovernmental agreement with Ludlow School District regarding transportation of a youth in care. Um, as a board, you may, um, I do know we're going to have we're going to have one abstention tonight on the consent agenda.
Yeah, I'd like to pull out.
Just. Yep. And, uh, but otherwise, um, any board member can ask for an item to be removed from the consent agenda. And we would vote on that separately. But, um, I do know that Katie is going to abstain. That's what you said, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Can we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay. I'll second it. This is one where we have to read that whole thing. Okay? We've got it up on the screen. It's up your screen. Is that two parter?
I make the motion to approve the consent agenda items, including personnel report as submitted with stipulation that each individual is required to comply with all requirements for new hires as indicated in Illinois statutes and RCS board policy and procedures, including ratification of bills prepaid by the financial manager under board policy for 50.
Joe Robinson?
We need a second.
I seconded.
No, we did, right? Joe Robinson?
Aye.
Tyler Wilson?
Aye.
Nikki Pettit?
Aye.
Diana Mendoza?
Aye.
Katie Johnston?
Just abstain?
Aye, abstain.
Modo Johnson?
Aye.
And John Bevitt?
Aye.
All right. Teaching assistant subpay. Um, we are going to have some, uh, long-term maternity leaves and, um, we worked, I met with the association. And we agreed, well, we didn't have to agree, but I wanted to work with them on this, on what we could do as far as increasing teaching assistant subrate. So the recommendation is that we increase it from $100 to a day to a dollar amount commensurate with the placement on the TA salary schedule in the RCE SPA with a guaranteed daily minimum of $105. So to translate what that means, if the person has a bachelor's degree and years of experience, they would actually be coming in higher than $15 an hour. So establishing a minimum and then we would be paying them similar to how we pay TAs for a long-term position.
I'll make the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion about this?
Tyler Wilson?
Aye.
Modo Johnson?
Aye.
Katie Johnston?
Aye.
Diana Mendoza?
Aye.
Nikki Pettit?
Aye.
Joe Robinson?
Aye.
Modo Johnson, did I get three?
You haven't made a modem. Yes, maybe you did.
Okay, sorry.
All right. Um, this is.
She didn't ask me, but that's.
No, but John didn't.
Sorry, John. Yeah. I, so I won't do it like that anymore. John Bevitt did.
Aye.
All right, thank you.
All right.
But it's one time.
I've got some text on that front. All right. So, uh, folks, this is the presentation of the tentative tax levy. Okay? So board members, you're going to want to look at, um, this lovely spreadsheet, which may or may not make sense to you at this time, but it's what I need to present to you. Um, the district is in, in the process of determining our tax levy. At the December board meeting, the board will need to hold a truth in taxation hearing prior to voting on whether or not to approve the tax levy. The tax levy is the legal mechanism for the district to request taxes are collected. It is typical that the tax levy exceeds the extension and the extension is the amount actually collected by the county. In order to account for possible errors, miscalculations or last-minute changes, which is why the levy tends to be coming higher than the extension. This year, the county estimates a property value increase in RCS of 7.1% with an additional $138,000 in new property, which that comes out to one new house, if I'm doing my math right. The district is limited in the amount of increase they can receive by the Property Tax Extension Limitation Law, PTEL. Most folks call that tax caps. For the first time since the law went into effect, and I think that was 2011, but don't quote me on that. The Consumer Price Index will exceed the maximum extension limit of 5%. This will protect local property taxpayers from a larger rate increase. In non-PTEL districts, there could be a significantly higher property tax increase. So how do I explain this? In a normal year, we are limited to taxing at CPI, which is usually the rate of inflation. We are now in the first time, um, that, um, in ever that the Consumer Price Index is well over 5%. I actually didn't even check it because I know it's over five, so it doesn't matter once it gets five. Um, and it's an interesting year because the local property values also increased by a significant amount. So 7.1% between the property value increases is quite high. So if we weren't at PTEL district, we, um, we could be going in and putting on a much higher tax levy if that's what the, uh, board chose to do. So the tentative tax levy is to ask for a net increase of 6.09%, which, which is $372,000. The likely extension is estimated at 5.1%, which is $312,000. The estimated total tax rate per RCS will decrease ever so slightly uh, from 4.6560 to 4.5689. Um, and again, that is an estimate. Um, the numbers provided here are, oh, I said that, are estimates and subject to change prior to board action at the December meeting. And if you remember last year, this was a much more complicated conversation uh, because we were resolving the TIF issue at the time last year. So, um, I think also in my conversations with other districts, uh, this is probably what, um, 5% is the limit that everybody's going to have, uh, in our county. And so anticipate that most districts are going to be doing what we're doing this year, which is, uh, a sum amount over 5% just to make sure we capture all that's available. So I am simply, I, I found out you don't have to approve the tentative tax levy. I just have to present it. Um, but I do have a motion, uh, in the agenda to approve it. And what you're really approving is that I continue working on the tax levy. And we have that at the December meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Woods. I'd like to make that motion. Can I get some of this second?
I second it.
Thank you, Joe.
Tyler Wilson?
Aye.
Joe Robinson?
Aye.
Nikki Pettit?
Aye.
Diana Mendoza?
Aye.
Katie Johnston?
Aye.
Modo Johnson?
Aye.
John Bevitt?
Aye.
All right. Approve the kitchen equipment bid. And this is in your packet and I'm, I made Jenny Frerick's day tonight in case you have questions. Kitchen equipment bids were due on Tuesday. Uh, and that's normal that we have the bids due the week of the board meeting. Um, the district received one bid from KDC Design of Champagne. The base bid is $83,192 with an additional pricing sheet for installation, materials, installation, and disposal of existing equipment in the amount of $6,594. There will be, I'm just informing the board of this, there will be additional electrical work that needs to be done to upgrade some of the outlets and circuits for the new equipment. And that is separate. That will be, uh, an electrician, we think, an actual electrician would come in and do that, not a kitchen installer.
Right. The actual company that bid for us will contract with them. So this should be the total.
Okay. Well, that's, that's why you're here, Jenny. Um, the board is asked to approve the bid and additional installation quote from KDC Design in the amount of $89,786. And just to clarify, because it was asked of me, we are talking about, um, cafeteria kitchen equipment. Okay? Not like the kitchenette right there. You know, we're talking about the big industrial commercial stuff. And how many buildings? Is it all the buildings?
Yeah, it's a variety of pieces that have been going out. Most of the equipment that we have is at least 30 years old. It's not the original kitchen equipment from when the buildings were built. So that tells you how old some of the equipment and how well-made it was.
Yeah.
But it's costing a lot in repair. So there's some ovens, refrigerators, just based on what Debbie, the, the foods director stated that we've needed to get repaired.
Did I, did I hear you right? We only had one bid?
Yep.
There's only one bid, one bid that came in then, correct? You're saying?
Two people requested bid packets. Only one submitted. We posted on our website, reached out to local, um, companies and placed the ads in the paper.
What is the disposal of the equipment? The 6594 coming from somebody that scraps?
So that is, the 6594 is for the actual reconnection of all of the, the gas lines because we're no longer up to code, the electrical lines, because we're no longer up to code, and then removing basically a semi-load of old equipment. So.
We're not getting any of the recycle money off of that.
Yep. I'd say we're paying more for the installation, right, than the disposal on that. And they have it costed out on there, but you know, on the, and when you look at the.
We can absolutely keep it and do it ourselves. They have no problem. I mean, that, that was not an issue at all. We just are pretty short-staffed. And so they have one company who's here. You can time it out, take care of all of it. That was the, the preference. But honestly, it doesn't, if you guys choose, then we can try to arrange to get a semi of some kind to, to go and take it to, for disposal. So.
So we, yeah, so you could just approve the actual bid, which that is just the equipment. And then, um, we, you, um, technically the board doesn't have to approve the 6,594 at this time. That could come back later as a separate bill. So it's up to the board.
With pleasure, board.
There's a lot of money to be left on the table in scrap, even though scrap iron is down right now.
That is a lot of money.
If you're talking about doing five kitchens, it's a lot of stainless steel, and stainless steel goes for a pretty penny along with copper.
It was just there.
I think we should approve the.
Just the base bid.
The base bid and do some looking into the other. I understand the reconnecting of the gas line and the electrical work, but I'd like to see credit possible.
That works, right, Jenny, just to approve the base bid right now.
Absolutely.
Okay?
I'll make a motion to approve the base bid.
Can I second it?
Yeah, thank you. John Reddington.
Aye.
Moto Johnson.
Aye.
Katie Johnston.
Aye.
Diana Mendoza.
Aye.
Nikki Pettit.
Aye.
Joe Robinson.
Aye.
Tyler Wilson.
Aye.
Action, change to employee health insurance. The district's insurance committee, which includes administrators and members of both bargaining units, is recommending a roughly $3,850 monthly expenditure for a buy-down option in our employee health insurance program. For a relatively small cost, we are reducing the deductible and out-of-pocket maximum, giving our employees a much better benefit. The district pays 91% of single employee coverage. Currently, the district pays $501 per month per covered employee, and it will increase to $517.79 a month per covered employee. This continues the board's commitment to offer competitive compensation and benefits for our employees. And so there is an attached document that's right here, and we share something, it's this one, lavender and blue. So the only thing that is actually changing from the column on the left, the purple to the blue, is that out-of-pocket maximum. That's the only thing that's changing. What that amounts to is a reduction of $1,500 in risk for an individual employee and a reduction in $4,500 in risk for a family. And it's a 3.23% increase overall, but we take, we pay 91% of that increase. And not exactly, I'm, we pay less than that. I'm getting my numbers mixed up. And open enrollment starts today, actually, so. Hopefully you approve it.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion? See none? Ms. Hannah's gonna do her job.
John Reddington.
Aye.
Moto Johnson.
Aye.
Katie Johnston.
Aye.
Diana Mendoza.
Aye.
Nikki Pettit.
Aye.
Joe Robinson.
Aye.
Tyler Wilson.
Aye.
Well, I know they're disapproved, I just, I was looking at this. One way to think of this in perspective is, right now, the annual premium is 1.729 million, and we are talking about increasing it by, what I said, 58,000, I think is the total, 55,000. And we pay roughly 91%. So health insurance is very expensive, and our costs actually have been coming, came down quite a bit over the last year, which is unexpected. The bus contract is off the agenda, so we, I can share what we're doing, but first student didn't get the contract to me in time to include in the packet, so, but we have to do an adjustment for an error on their part, where they forgot to put in the pricing for certain things that we're already paying for. So we need to get that contract updated. All right. Information items. We did have one FOIA for our copier contract. Point of information for the board, we actually did enter into a new copier contract this week for, we're in a five-year lease, and the lease expires in December. There is a student discipline report in your packet, and board members, I wanna direct you to this one. So I do think this is timely, and I'm gonna put this data up on the screen. It is in the public packet also. So one of the concerns that I hear, and I heard from a community member and a board member this evening, is that we don't take disciplinary action against students. Unfortunately, the numbers of exclusionary discipline in our district are actually quite high. And most of those exclusionary discipline actions are related to physical aggression. So it's difficult for me when I hear folks say that we don't do anything about it. We do what we can. There's a limit to what we can do. And the board knows that you just sat in a two-hour meeting discussing the discipline of an individual student. So I know that you're volunteering your time, you're taking the time to listen and look at these things. I also want you to know that we do look at the data, we do problem-solve what we can do differently, and each case is very challenging. Each time a student is removed from school, that parent is absolutely contacted, that parent is informed of what's happening. Now, that does not mean the parent agrees, but we do have due process rights in place for our students that mean we don't just kick a kid out because someone says another child hit them. We don't kick kids out of school for that. And I know the board knows that, but I think it's important for us, the community and in the audience to know, when a five-year-old hits another five-year-old, we don't expel them. And it's also not happening because we're not supervising them. I was at East Lawn on Monday. I was outside at 7:55 helping with supervision along with other staff members. 7:55. I broke up a fight. Okay? I was there, I was actively supervising, and two fifth-grade boys got in a fight. And I can tell you that something happened to them, and that their parents found out about it, and that their parents had to come in and work with the school, and those kids are back in school. We don't expel and kick out kids who get in physically violent altercations. I wish they didn't, but it's very disappointing to our staff, who, I'll say, they could leave tomorrow, and they would get a job somewhere else, and they'd probably make more money. Okay? No one is working here that doesn't wanna be here, because anyone who doesn't wanna be here can leave. And it's very disappointing when folks decide to attack the people who are doing the work. We had a teacher get jumped on and choked. And maybe that parent says, my, my child didn't do it, because that's what we're dealing with. It doesn't mean we don't care. And I wanna add too, that 90, 98% of the kids, probably even higher than that, are wonderful and are not causing these kinds of problems. And I know, as a parent, nobody wants it to happen to their kid. And it's frustrating as a parent when it doesn't end. And we are, the employees in the district are just as frustrated. Our lives would be a lot easier if we weren't having to deal with these discipline issues like this. I just wanted to put it out there, there's a lot more layers to this discipline data that I'm working with my team on. So for instance, the other layer to this is, how does this compare to last year? It's fairly similar to last year, so we're not seeing a decrease, there is a slight decrease in exclusionary actions. CARE, which is our elementary alternative program, the placements at CARE are up quite a bit this year, and that was intentional, because the board did approve adding a second classroom into that program. So what we've seen is a shift from kids having to go to out-of-school suspension to coming into CARE, which is, it's not in-school suspension, it's much better than in-school suspension. But it's an alternative placement for generally up to three days. We've had two students in CARE this year for two weeks days, which the board also approved longer-term placements. So this is an information item, and I just talked for a long time. What I wanna add to, I sent, last year, October, it was the October board meeting, I did a presentation on student discipline for the board, and if the, if the board would like to ask me to do that again, I can definitely put that back on the agenda. I think there was probably a reason I did it last October also. But I wanna point out that there was no discussion. So I presented it, and I asked for discussion, and there may have been somebody comparing the school administration wants feedback from the board, because you do represent the community. And I would be happy to do that at the October or the December meeting, we could call it a special meeting. But that is, and I reshared that presentation with the board this week, just over some of that discipline information. So this is the discipline data. Okay? Questions? Move on. I think an important line to note before I do move on for, for the. This is where, this bottom, these bottom two rows, to me, are one of the things I look at, because we are controlling for, we're controlling for population. So as you can see here, Broadmeadow currently has 227 students, East Lawn has 311. So it would make more sense that Broadmeadow would have more, or Broadmeadow would have fewer out-of-school suspensions than East Lawn, right? Because there's, it's a bigger population. So you have to actually factor in the population. And what's interesting here is, the total number of exclusionary incidents at Broadmeadow and East Lawn is actually the same number. .093 and .096 are really close together. So there, that's a thing that I look at. Now, what I do see difference between Broadmeadow and East Lawn is, the exclusionary incidents at East Lawn are resulting in longer periods of time out of school. So that's what that bottom row means. Okay? So it's one thing just to look at the whole numbers up here, like East Lawn had 12 suspension incidents, Broadmeadow had five, but you do have to think about population. And we do have 40 less students, 40 fewer students at East Lawn this year, due to the changes we made regarding boundaries, not boundaries, but regarding capping class sizes. So we do have fewer students. I'm done talking about that, because I could talk about it all night. Unless we have any questions.
I'd like to see you do the report again.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
We can't hear you.
We can hear you.
I asked him to do the report again, as he did last year. October, right? Dr. Woods?
Yeah. I did put something together again, yes. Congratulations to the district and really Jenny Frerick, to grant writer extraordinary. We were awarded a federal school violence prevention program grant in the amount of $305,000. This is for campus security through systems such as panic buttons, new cameras, door alarms, HEPA systems, hardware for new doors, and various security-related software. So for instance, we're installing all new doors where they're needed, classroom doors, that was already approved. This will actually pay for the hardware on those doors, which is quite expensive. So it's kind of blending in with some projects we already had. Annually required postings are in the packet, and those are contracts over $25,000, IMRF compensation disclosure, administrator and teacher salary and benefits report. I'm making sure the board knows that the property casualty and work comp insurance, we are beginning a review on that. We last had a request for proposal in 2018, and that is considerable expense for us, that's insuring the people and the property, is what that is. And so we have, we are, we don't have any more public comments, board superintendent comments?
Can I start?
Sure.
It, it's concerning that the comments that have been made in the audience, if they could, certainly I'm very right for comments, but if they could be softer, we could hear all that up here. It just, if we could just tone that down, we appreciate it. You know, I, I think we wanna be respectful, and I think you guys do too.
He needs to.
It's loud, and it reverberates right up here. And I'm trying to think, and I have hard enough time without distractions, so please, if you could, I'd appreciate that. Well, when we don't hear what a board member say.
We can't hear you over here.
We can't hear you and hear whether we're talking or not, because you're talking with a soft voice. I see a lot of this, of talking, and I just wish it'd be a little quieter. I mean, again, I understand that you have concerns, and we wanna hear those, but if you're talking between yourselves, we can hear that up here, and I'm, I said, I'm having a hard time.
I respect you, John, for saying that, but also talk to the gentleman beside you to change his tone of voice too. When he said, "We can hear you," I think that's very sarcastic, okay?
Well, it was, because I could hear everything you were saying, but you were asking board members to speak up. But I could hear everything you were saying.
You should not be sarcastic to community.
Oh, I don't think I was being sarcastic, I was telling the truth.
Oh, my God.
You're disrupting the meeting.
Oh.
I think he meant you in the general you.
Huh?
I think he meant you in the general you, not specifically you. I think he was saying you, people that are talking, are disrupting the meeting, and I think is what he. So thank you.
And she still can't hear you, even when you're talking.
Yeah, and just out of respect, you were just speaking, I could barely hear you. We can't hear over here.
So, so.
I understand, because it's just as difficult for us to hear back here.
So you.
Okay, so I will project, what I was saying was, I don't think that he was saying you specifically.
Okay.
I think he was saying you, as in the general you, to the people that were talking. It is hard to hear when, no, he said you are disrupting the meeting, not specifically you, you in general, the people that are talking, is what he said.
Correct, thank you.
Well, the question, the question being asked is, what did he say? What am I supposed to say? Hush, because you can't hear? I'm gonna let her know what's being said. Okay, well, then, then we will make, we will make a concerted effort to speak louder. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And you have every right.
Sergio just started a minute ago.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
They'll take care of it. That's my comment.
I do wanna say thank you guys for coming here tonight.
Certainly.
You know, and speaking, but, you know, your concerns, and it is being heard. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
I have a thank you, but it's a little backdated. Thank you to our teachers for working so hard, October 6, for parent-teacher conferences. Parent-teacher conferences were held like two weeks ago, I think well-attended, I heard positive things, so thank you for that, I know it's a long night, so, thank you.
Thank you for any board members who were there. I have a list.
You had to be.
Yeah, I had. Wasn't that there?
I have a whole list of stuff still.
Yep.
All right, ready?
Yeah.
All right. All right, I am letting board know that I anticipate that next month's agenda will include the fiscal year '22 audit. This is one month later than last year, so that'll be exciting. At the end of the month, and we get audited every year. We do get audited every year. At the end of the month, DISB, the state board, will be releasing the annual school report card data. We have had access to the data already, and building principals have been looking at the data and applying it to their school improvement planning. At this time, I can't share all the stuff. I can share, though, that some of what we are seeing is very positive, but we still do have a lot of work to do. This is number, this next one is about transportation, and I do wish that some of the folks that commented were still here. I am currently working with First Student, our transportation provider, to explore options for net. I have began, I have asked them to begin looking at different scenarios that would likely result in staggered elementary start times and possibly increase access to transportation for students. This would come at a cost to the district, but that would ultimately be a. This would come at a cost to the district, but that would ultimately be a board decision. So I'm trying to get an idea of what increased transportation and starting elementaries at different times, what would that look like, and what would it cost? I am currently working on a new board member orientation document and program. This is something that I learned about while attending the IESA conference in Springfield. The purpose of this orientation would be to provide public overview of what is involved in being a board member. The target audience would be people considering running for the board. I would like to do this in November, and will ask for up to two current board members to attend. I'd love for more of you to attend, but that would make it an official meeting.
Only two can.
Only two can, so is there any, I guess, I did talk about this with Nikki and John, and they seemed to think it was a good idea. Is there any concern about me doing this? This would be a public meeting with all the materials being public. Okay? No?
I think it's a great idea.
I think that will help with some of the concern that some folks had with me meeting with individual board members prior to the, the ones that we appointed, okay? So this would be an open process. November eleventh is the Chamber of Commerce's annual banquet. The district is purchasing a table, we already have. Members of the board wanting to attend on behalf of the district, please inform Hannah by October twenty-eighth, and Mr. Brotherton, you're going.
My wife said I was going.
Your wife already told you we were going, so.
More than I do, so.
Board members, please make sure to check what emails regarding the triple-I conference in November. Hannah will send out emails as we get closer with details about the conference and information about your reimbursable expenses. She actually wants to talk to you before you go today, if you can. Hannah and I are currently working on the holiday gift, and that's in air quotes, for our staff from the board. We anticipate spending about ten to thirteen dollars per employee. The gift will be a type of office or school supply, because that is an allowable thing to do, and I know it is already, Hannah, I may have already ordered it. The district is moving forward with, forward now on a landscaping project in front of Ader. It will address the areas adjacent to the building where JCO meets, and there is a map, and it's in the public packet also, but just so you can, it's really tiny, but you can see what areas we're talking about. This will be at a price of seventeen thousand six hundred and sixty-eight dollars. We have sought out multiple quotes, and will move forward with DEEM landscaping out of Thomas Grove. A project of this type may require a bid at the fifty thousand dollar threshold. So we did, this is a scenario where we went out and got multiple quotes for a smaller project here in Ader. We'll see how it goes, and we want to get this one rolling now because of the weather. And so it's gonna be this fall still, right? It's almost winter. Thank you. Oh, you're really staring at it. I'm done. I really am.
What time are you done? Well, since you got the, can I have my, my thing back?
Yes.
What can we do? Well, I think we're ready for adjournment, aren't we?
I'll make the motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second hand. You get that?
We seconded?
Go. All in favor? Aye? And opposed? I don't want, let's stay here a little.
Been here since four-thirty. Thank you. Board representatives, thank you.